Try to make sure that the stuff that I missed while I was.
Just read the press.
My dad lived in one and we looked at him across the.
There was guys outside.
Neighbor.
We should have.
Like.
Water.
Are you still? All there.
That is correct. Yeah.
The bear.
And we just have to. Two years. Set us and we have.
So good. Shelly right here.
Audio. They'll make.
Yeah. Oh. I love. The. Three. Cheering. Sorry. And our Girl Scouts.
It's so.
I.
Okay, Mary's like. I always like.
So. Auburn.
I have. Was it your. Does that. Or.
Did she read?
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. This is.
That's.
Oh. So. As.
That is. Yes.
I look. They also had.
We. Like. But it's hard to.
So.
I mean, I'm like.
I didn't.
Let's get back to our first thing in the morning.
Actually.
Thanks a lot for that.
Right. All right.
Alright, since. Since it is exactly four o'clock on the dot and. We love being punctual around here, I guess I should go ahead and kick the meeting off. So welcome to the Tempe City Council of Tempe Development for Vision. Vision. Joint. Development for New Commission Joint Meeting Agenda. It has had one of the long times of crap if I couldn't pronounce it. Members of the meeting attend the meeting this week are asked to maintain distance with the departments and master office of all activities for city of Tempe. Policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams by clicking on the link so that it's a public meeting so people can. Eleven. I think what we might want to do before we get started is kind of go around the table and do a quick introduction so people all know it's here. And I guess I've started pushing a red. So I'm.
Commissioner Joe Porte, first turn as a commissioner, thank you.
Dr. Sanino. I'm Dr. Sanino, Commissioner.
Mike DiDavincio, I currently serve as Chairman of the DRC.
Arlene Chin.
Councilmember.
Corey Woods, Mayor.
Verdetta Hodge, Councilmember.
Sony Blain, Tempe's Attorney. City Attorney.
Good afternoon, Rosen, Chastity Chief Deputy City Manager, welcome to everyone.
Deputy. Paul Gertrude.
Ryan Little, Deputy Director.
Hi, Andrew Chang, City Manager.
Harriet Zerostia, Interim City Clerk.
And I see as Councilmember Keating there as well, virtually.
I'm here, Mayor. Randy Keating, Councilmember.
Thank you. Chief Staff, any other councilmembers online or just Councilmember Keating? Okay, perfect. Alright, with that said, I will move on to item number two, which is Community Development Department.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members. And official members. Thank you for being here today. There's no job of the new commission tonight. I know some of you probably. You were misinformed and that was my fault. So we will have plenty of time for open discussion tonight.
Jeff, it's usually good whenever there's meetings that aren't on the calendar, people typically get very happy that they get time back, so I think you're probably the most popular person in the room right now.
There's some game of.
Ah, see, see. Again. Old top of the person in the room.
There you go.
So. About staffing levels and community. And as many of you know, and I know I've discussed it with some people past. Our staffing levels have been a little low. We haven't had the bodies that we've needed for the past couple of years. So in the last six months, the Community Development Department has filled a number of key roles. The department. And so those roles are the Deputy Director of Building Safety. The Building Safety Deputy, excuse me, Building Safety Plan Review Manager. The Principal Civil Chair. And then in the next few weeks, we're going to give you the new Crime Prevention Planning Coordinator position. The Principal Planner Supervisor for. The Project Assistance Team. Two Senior Planners in the Planning Division, and then the Principal Planner will be assigned to the DRC. People can use. Or to the board, hopefully, at the next meeting. Now, with that said, we have about five positions that we're hoping to. Get in place and we anticipate filling in the next four to five months as well. Community Development is in the middle of what I consider a sort of a minor reorganizational change. Duties and responsibilities of employees in Community Development have been sort of assessed across the department. And we're making sure that the right positions are in the right workings. And so there's a little rearranging of the players, a bit of a rearranging of job duties going on at this time. Actually, the implementation of this binary organization is necessary for good customer service and that you guys are going to be seeing for the near future. So. As you know, from the projects that constantly you see on your agendas, Community Development is. We don't anticipate slowing down anytime soon. In the last ten meetings, over the last six months, we've taken fifty planning cases to the DRC. And of those cases. Heard by the Commission, fourteen, and then forwarded on to the Council for their. Review. So during same same time period, the new construction valuation in Tempe totaled over two hundred twenty-one million dollars. Six period. Community Development collected over three point seven million dollars in.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, how much?
Two hundred twenty-one million dollars in. Construction valuation.
Thank you.
Then three point seven million dollars in building progress. And we also processed more than a thousand building permits during that time period. They've been highly involved in this fast-paced construction environment. And. Now, we expect the training to continue as we move forward. That's why we're grateful and excited to get your input on the General Plan Twenty-Fifty. Which Ryan LeBeck is going to talk a little bit about. That was these Ryans are, as he said, Deputy Director of.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it.
Quick, quick thing, Ryan, before we get started, does anyone have any questions about any of what Jeff talked about in terms of some of the reorganization of the department or the future of where the department's going before we move on to item number three? Whether council or commission or so. Okay, one of them, thank you, Jeff, Ryan, I'll turn back to you.
So another item that's very crucial to y'all, all the city councils, DRC is the General Plan Twenty-Fifty, so we've been working on research and outreach for the past year and a half now. And we're prepared to go to public outreach with the public draft that'll be planned for May fifth. And our stop is with the city council on a workday session, so we'll get a little more in depth as to what the details of the plans are at that time. And then we'll be coming to a future study session with the DRC. This is our key on community time period now, where we're collecting that public comment on the first official draft. You can receive the preliminary draft, that's our requirement notice to send out for state law in terms of the notification requirement. And then we'll have two public hearings required with the Development New Commission, two public hearings with city council and we'll get an adoption. This does also require us to ratify this decision, but through a voter election process, so this will be on the ballot in the March twenty twenty-four election. One of the other critical components of this in unique is that because DRC has to look, had like two hearings for it, one will be. In South Tempe, which will be at the Temple of the Library, it will be in our standard location at the city council chambers. One item that we worked on and noticed talking with the mayor is that. Our beloved Chair DiDavincio, his term expires on July one. And we'd hate to see him not be able to complete the process without finishing it up, so what we're working on is through the mayor's office and party to councils, a resolution. That will allow Chair DiDavincio to have one additional meeting to complete that review and process with. Regarding the general plan, we need to put a new regular member in there without having that full experience of going through that that hearing and input process. So really critical to the process. Looking forward. With that, if anyone has any questions, but we certainly look forward to meeting you all individually or collectively as we go through the general plan outreach process.
Thank you, Ryan, I'm happy to do the resolution as well, as long as Chair DiDavincio will not delete my phone number if I extend his term by one meeting. Anyone else, any comments or questions for Ryan regarding General Plan Twenty-Fifty? Sounds good, okay, very easy. Alright, I guess with that said, we'll move on to item number four, and it's split up into two items. Four A is downtown redevelopment, kind of relating to heights, density, and use, so who's going to kick that one off, Ryan, is that you?
You know, our first two items are essentially icebreakers, just letting us chat it up a little bit, let you guys hear us and get your guys' thought process going. Now is where we want to kind of get your all involvement in discussion input and kind of share the dialogue with you and the commission on some of these topics. Specifically, a topic of interest is downtown development. We're seeing a lot of proposals come in, proposals for high-rise development, typically high-rise residential. They're usually pretty small blocks, like a third of an acre. We've got five currently high-rise developments in queue to go through a formal process. That means typically that they have to do a design review and a KAD to seek that alternate building height. We certainly wanted to get feedback, review all, how you feel about the vision setting for downtown, what these buildings look like, the land uses and feel if. Just an open conversation on are we going in the right direction as to what we're seeing, design-wise, land use-wise, in the downtown area? And we appreciate any feedback or just an open dialogue as to the projects that are coming in online at this time.
That's good. So Ryan with the best icebreaker ever in the history of icebreakers. I'm assuming there's got to be probably some conversation around this about what people think about, because I see things coming before me all the time, developers constantly in my office talking about developers and it's exactly what Ryan's talking about, a lot of. High-rise, multifamily, have conversations a lot, developers looking to really remake what downtown looks like when it comes to heights and look and feel in general. So I wanted to see if there's any comments from the commission or the council on that. Commissioner Lloyd.
Thank you, Mayor, so I know we had a case come through recently. And the materials were put under quite a bit of scrutiny, so I think that's a good thing in moving forward, you know, density. Think my, well, that day was ship has kind of sailed, we know we need more units here, but to see it more thoughtful. And scrutinized maybe on the front end in terms of what type of material, so we have more, I would say, quality and product. You know, once these developments are done so that they're not putting up the most value-engineered. Materials available, but something that will be classy and timeless as they're hopefully here long term.
Excellent, thank you, Bishop Spears.
My concern is is the density, so we have a twenty-five-story residential unit going between two one-story buildings. And the one of them is on the corner of University of Mill, and as I understand it, the height limitation for Mill Avenue is ten stories. So you're going to have a ten-story building and directly behind it, a twenty-five-story building. It would nice, be nice if there was some kind of step situation and also commitment to open space. We see what's happening with downtown and it's becoming the concrete corridors. And it just would be nice if we had some kind of commitment to open space, particularly on corners and to make them a little more the rest of the.
Thank you, with Councilmember Hodge.
Yes. Mine will be more about making sure it's more sustainable, like when we do use it, make sure that we can use like plastic. Is cooling and bring down the cost and and even solar, you know, as much solar we can use, we're in Arizona, we're in the desert. And we're not using enough of our solar, we can actually add into it too, so just make it more sustainable. To help with utilities and cost.
Johnson, Chair DiDavincio.
Several councils ago, it was very helpful when some thoughtful. Directions from from the council seated at the time. Talked to us about those setbacks, you know, kind of building out from Mill Avenue and appropriate height and density. As you went east and west from Mill Avenue and we kind of got a better feel as a commission for that stair stepping. We didn't really talk about open space at the time and and the lot has been built since then, but revisiting those plans. As a council would probably be helpful and then passing that information on. Infill development is is in in the neighborhoods is probably ads or even more controversial, brings out more public comment in our hearings. And that's when. You know, one or two single-family home sites are assembled or townhome sites. And we're getting a lot of attached housing, three-story attached housing with integrated garages. Small, you know, eight to twelve-unit projects coming through on a pretty regular basis. I think we need to. Talk about. How we, you know, the importance of how we're going to buffer that from existing neighborhoods that that will remain single-story. That are now being surrounded by these larger projects. Is that something we're willing to continue doing?
Councilmember Drummond.
I like what Chairman DiDavincio was just talking about, I I like to see, and I think we had talked about this at one time at one of our retreats, is to come up with a. A list of the things that the council would like to see so that you as the DRC or people who are picking up development packages already have an idea. There's going to be a council member that's going to ask about dog parks, there's going to be a council member that's going to ask about solar, somebody is going to want to make sure that we have EV parking. Some of those things that we ask, it would be nice that those things were at the front end of what happens when they pick up development packets or that you guys know, you're not guessing, well. I think I talked to Councilmember Garland and she likes really tall buildings and Councilmember Chin likes short ones and, I mean, just something that you understand that is collectively in consensus of a council. That would be easier for you guys because you would know what it would look like when it got to us, I think that would be really helpful. But as far as the density, I, Councilmember, there were done though Savage told me when I got a council that. When we were looking at the development, that there was some type of plan or program or something that showed. The tight density, the high buildings were downtown, down, right downtown where we are. And then they did stair step to the neighborhoods is what this is expected, I haven't seen anything like that, but she did tell me that there was something like that that was done, so I would love to know if that's. Actually exists and can I see it or can we see it, so that would help us a little bit. But I mean, I look at it as downtown Tempe is where we want to have the density and so my thing with the density, I'm high with, I'm good with the density, I'm not great with super high buildings. But I'm, I would like to see us have an opportunity to say, if we want the density downtown, we want a lot of people down here, this is what we want, this is where it should be. Then you don't need a car, so we're not going to give them a requirement of having to have have so many parking spots. When if they're down here and it's dense and we have light rail and we have access to cut bikes and all these other things that could be helpful for us, that we cut down on the requirement for for parking and they can lower the building, we won't have to deal with bike owners, that's just.
Commissioner Redden.
I just wanted to actually reinforce what Councilmember Garland just was saying. And that's where where the requirements for parking, we're asking that we can change that because we're living in a different era. And particularly with all the alternate transit downtown. This new building that was brought before is seven stories apart. That's like a building. And I've lived downtown for four years now and actually witnessed parking garages that never fill up, never even close to fill up. Maybe we could look for some innovative parking sharing. Approach where a new building could sort of lease spaces from a current building's already built parking garage, something like that.
Senator Lloyd.
A very similar thought track on that, as we talk about density, one of my biggest concern is the impact it has on whatever. Material road that it's coming out on, what's the circulation of that look like, because we have too many cars, I ride my bike a lot, I find it very scary around here with the amount of cars, and so we'll just add more density. And then the amount of cars that go along with it, so I think it's also a safety aspect, traffic aspect that we should continue to look at. How are the parking requirements in line with what we want to see for long-term vision for our.
Councilmember Hodge and Councilmember Chin.
Okay, I was going to go on the same thing, I've heard, I've visited a couple of cities just recently. And one of them was Orlando and Orlando has parking, what they do to continue with parking is they take it out of the downtown area and they have a free parking space at another area and they have buses. They continually go in and out and trains and whatever, they hit to that area, so it's not directly in our downtown. But you know, you can still have your car, but you don't have to have it right in the downtown area, so it comes down on traffic, but yet, you know. You can still have your transportation when you go other places, because like as 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 it is in our land, as it is here. A lot of people, even though we want it to be this way, some people are never going to be relying on transit because of the heat, whatever it causes, but you still find another way. That you can have the transportation, that it doesn't have to be directly in our downtown area like a, you know, and we can. And that will help to utilize the buses to go back and forth, but if they have to go to Glendale, they're not going to catch a bus. But if they are in the area of Ten B and they're just going for their house to parking, they can, they can leave their car and park. So that's something that I saw in another city that I was going to see, because you know, we're in that, we're at that stage. We're going to run out of areas that we can make, I mean, we barely have enough for housing, we'll have to add a parking garage to every single part of the downtown that causes more congestion, more traffic. How do we get the cars out of downtown, but still allow people to have their cars if they want it? And that's something that I wanted to bring out to.
Councilmember Chin, then Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to follow what Commissioner Lloyd shared about the density. A concern when it comes to density would be, yes, the traffic area surrounding it and mobility in that area, but also. What I think about, what I'm looking at density in certain areas is public safety. Fire, medical rescue, if they are able to access those buildings and and their response time, are they adequate? I know that nationally, was it. I think it was in Chicago and they're not, right, they're very familiar with tall buildings and density, and they had some issues recently. An incident with their fire medical rescue with some incidents at at some of their high-rises. I I want to learn from those issues and to keep that in mind as we're considering the where and the what of density.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor, all these comments are rather insightful, something that, you know, I would like to bring up, and maybe this is a discussion for the future, is. A lot of what's being said here was actually discussed and kind of codified and laid out in the. R I P Urban Core Master Plan. So maybe it makes sense to kind of take a look at that document again and see, you know, I hear talk of. You know, we want dog parks on the front end, solar panels on the front end, parking requirements reconsidered, EV parking spots, what are we going to do about multimodal transportation as does density continues to grow in the downtown area? And I think we all agree that that is appropriate for density to grow in downtown area, so maybe it's time to to dig that up and and revise it with the DRC and with staff and. Try to come up with something that can codify some of the concerns that are, or I should say suggestions that are that I've heard so far, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating, Chair DiDavincio.
I think going back to the comment about. Past Councilmember, Ariadna Savage, I think what she was referring to is some modeling that was done and it was really, it was visual modeling. You know, three-dimensional through ASUs with a co-innovation center.
Decision theater.
A decision theater and there was, there was, it really helped to to see what we were, what we were trying to plan for. I think we're looking to the future, one of the things that that comes up constantly that I think about is we're missing opportunities to take advantage of two assets that we created. Tempe Town Lake, which has obviously been here for an awful long time. And and the commission has seen a lack of. Community assets being built along the way. We have this, this, this beautiful asset. And projects are being developed along it, private developments, but they're really, the amenities that are on site are just for the residents or the office users that are on site. We have yet to build any significant restaurant that someone would want to drive from South Phoenix and stop before they get to Scottsdale. We're not utilizing that asset to to create public space. We've got light rail and it's streetcar now, streetcar's almost a year old. When we talk about where should we be building these garages so that people can come into town for large events? You know, but park on the, you know, on the peripheral. We, we really haven't used that, those corridors yet for building garage space. But we have had a lot of projects, big projects that have been approved here, come through with no parking. The Marriott Hotel has, if I remember correctly, maybe ten or twelve spaces on site that are part of their project. That giant hotel has really no parking, few spaces on the street. They lease some spaces in the in the garage under the more house. So it's possible, they've been in business for a couple of years now and they're. They seem to be able to take care of their guests, so. It can be done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other guests, Bishop Johnson.
Just one, one quick thing to touch on, and I know talking about codifying some things and I I understand recently that the city of Tucson was able to develop some. Language for EV parking requirements, minimum parking requirements associated with, what I think is especially important, parking garage is it's difficult to interpret things like that, more so than parking law, but. There are some examples out there that I think.
Thank you. Commissioner Redden.
It's already been brought up about open space, but I would appreciate if the council gave some guidance on the pedestrian experience for downtown, I think. That's another term, but all these new buildings have a minor landscape. We're not really thinking about overall for downtown's pedestrian experience. That should be a special focus.
Anyone else, other comments? Bishop.
Yes. Something that we've heard, and I've heard this back when I was on the Transportation Commission, now at DRC. Some of these buildings and on Real Salado were stayed far away, and all of a sudden you hear that, my gosh, the traffic down there is awful, I can't get out of my parking truck. You know, so. It's, the thought process is that we don't know the impact generally of the trap, the traffic says might be percentage. That's Transportation Department, they're the ones that these things often go back to and they have to deal with, then the city gets blamed because people get stuck in traffic. And we know we can't build our way out of the traffic, especially down here, but I think the thing is that we need to have more information that comes from the other departments that are impacted as to what their thoughts are. As to what their thoughts are of this, other than just to see a line up and say, yeah, then it's a bit, no comments or whatever. But that's one that I think is going to continue to serve us as we have more of these buildings. I know somebody, one of the, one of the zoning attorneys that was presenting the twenty-five story one. Offensively mentioned that where the Salvation Army is going, that property, talking about a thirty-story. Well, you know, you got shame to park in between both of them, so, you know, I I just don't know how that works down here. At some point in time, people are driven away. And as Commissioner Redmond. And you've got to give the ultra pedestrian coverage because you want to attract all ages, but by same token, it's not safe down there. One thing to deal with bikes and scooters and and students, but the other thing to deal with cars. That will overpower any of us, especially if we're in that kind of old aging situation. So we want to encourage that things are looked at maybe a little more openly as well, not just student impact, but in fact, anybody wanting to come down here.
To to piggyback off what you're saying, Commissioner Casano, Commissioner Redmond, that's one of the things that I've been very much focused on too. I know Councilwoman Chin and I have talked a lot about trying to bring in. Different restaurants into the downtown and a different retail experience that really encompasses what downtown Tempe is now, not what it was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, I could absolutely see that everything was very much geared towards the student population and perhaps people who were ASU employees. But I mean, now with the advent of Mirabella and all of the multifamily in the downtown, one of those buildings which I live in myself. All the hotels that are coming on online, including the Omni at the end of this month. Clearly, you're getting very different people down here that were probably down here even five, ten years ago. We have a very vibrant senior population, uh we have a lot of folks like myself living down here who are looking for opportunities to eat and drink and and find retail. Uh, we have a lot of people I'm seeing now getting out of, you know, Ubers and Lifts and and suits with briefcases. We're clearly here as part of a business crowd and they're also looking to find places to recreate. Uh, and I, and from what we hear many times on council, they can't find them. I think Chair DiMedico talked about that, many times those folks are still, like a lot of people even probably in this room, including myself, ending up sometimes at Scottsdale and in Phoenix. Because they're finding the options they want in those cities. It's not because people who live here want to spend money in other communities, it's because they're not finding the option they want down here. But as um, you know, Commissioner Casano, Commissioner Redmond, you talked about, the pedestrian experience is part of that. People have to feel comfortable walking around in and around the downtown and it has to be a downtown for people of all ages and all different backgrounds. So that's just a point I wanted to second. Commissioner Spears?
Um, related to that, when we see the mixed use projects coming in, mixed use may include fifteen hundred square feet of retail. That's a coffee shop. We we're not seeing a requirement that you have to, so you couldn't put a restaurant there if you wanted to. We had one case and Mike was able to get uh them to commit to three thousand, I think it was, which is still not a big restaurant. Uh, but it's, that's part of the vision about what do we want down here? And if you want to have retail restaurants, that kind of thing, you have to require more than fifteen hundred square feet of retail space.
Good point, thank you. Anyone else, any further comments on item four A?
A lot of notes over there, guys. How many pages did you write over there?
Well, it's on page two. All right, um, question, Brian, please.
Uh, any thoughts on maybe student housing or maybe the impact of housing on residential in the downtown area?
There's the questions about student housing, anyone have any additional thoughts they'd like to share? Good, bad, indifferent, or? Welcome to the club. Uh, Councilmember Garland?
I just curious what you, what you mean, you mean that that um apartments are going up here, so they'll be taking desks, so it'll be loaded more with students in it? Is that what you're saying, or is that a bad problem?
Typically, there's been a higher or or easier financing solution when bringing or introducing a purpose-built student housing project. And that can come in the form of a high-rise development as well. So what you see more in those are four-bedroom or even five-bedroom units that have individual bathrooms in every bedroom. Um, so it's a purpose-built design that are intended to rent by the bed and not provide a um alternative living, say that where you might have. An individual owning the whole unit or renting the whole units or 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 just, um, it diminishes the the variety you could have of types of of living styles that will live at the downtown.
Okay, really quick, then I'll go to Chair DiMedico. I mean, my, my personal preference is for things that are less geared and sort of designed for student housing and things that are much more flexible. Because we we recognize that any kind of multifamily complex that's built in downtown with the largest public university. Uh, but so I would prefer that it be something where students can live and obviously will live. But that any one of us could also live in that kind of environment as well in any of those buildings. But those layouts that are specifically kind of geared towards students where it's, you know, a bedroom in every corner and just a center space where it's all of the. The kitchen equipment and everything else, I I I would much rather here, I I would much rather kind of skew a lot less towards that and much more to. Spaces that are much more kind of traditional workforce or market rate multifamily that pretty much anyone of any age can live in, given the fact that it'll be. Anyone from students to seniors, so that would be, you know, my perspective and, you know. Uh, what's going to cheer you, but. Fifteen, twenty years ago, uh when we would hear cases on D R C year. There was a lot of frustration from the older neighborhoods, uh the Mitchell Park neighborhoods, the neighbor lashes. Um, anything in in, you know, walking distance of ASU, that their quality of life was suffering because so many students were filling up. Um, rental housing and and it was just not good for everyone. And I think that over the last eight to ten years, it's more, especially on Apache, um, a lot more of these purpose-built. Uh, student housing projects have opened up and been successful. Uh, I think that it has probably improved what's happening in the neighborhoods. Uh, we now, what we hear uh is when uh someone is trying to add a second story to their home. Uh, they want to stay in their home, they like their neighborhood, they don't have enough living space, they're putting a second story up. Uh, or they're building uh a a a unit in the backyard. Uh, that's, you know, whether it's a cool house or or a a mother-in-law house or something for aging parents. Um, if the neighbors come in and they question the design, they want to see, well, why is this new kitchen? Or why are there so many bathrooms? So that's the sensitivity now in the neighborhoods is um is this student housing, you know, being um, you know, under the guise of of just uh any, you know, a second story. Sometimes it is. Sometimes it's pretty apparent what's going on, but other times it's just, you know, multi-generational families want to live together. Absolutely. Commissioner Lloyd?
So I'm gonna put my ASU hat on for more. Um, so I just know from the by the bed or four and five bedrooms. Especially depending on where it is, I know that's that's a position that ASU doesn't generally support because we want. Have the highest group like credibility of success for the students. And when they're kind of out on their own in these by the bed units, there's no real supervision or management. They're not really part of the sis, the ASU system. So I think that, you know, the overall position for ASU is we would like. Actual student housing to be managed by student housing operators, not just multifamily developers. Throwing one-bedroom, you know, all these bedroom bathrooms together and there's no real cap in the actual college experience. So I think in terms of, we all know that more units are required, I just think it needs to be thoughtful and from where they're located. Who's operating it, what kind of experience do they have? So it's set up for success for the residents, students, neighbors.
That's what we're doing.
So, you know, along those lines, I don't know what the ASU has planned for the future, but I would really, really encourage them, you guys, the ASU. To build more student housing so that on ASU property so that they could start managing the students that way. I I agree, I don't, I agree with you about the bedrooms, I didn't, I don't, I don't. I'm not excited about seeing multi-number of bedrooms in with the separate facilities that you know is gonna be student housing. I would prefer that not to be the way it looks downtown, like a cap of three bedrooms or something. So it could be a family or a small family or it could be a husband and wife in an office or something, but, you know, in that guest room. But I I think, I think it's important for us to be thinking about, it's not, it don't, we wouldn't want to build it right around students. Because then you also, again, you have to be thinking about who is going to really manage that property. Because it's, you know, we have had experiences of apartments going up and great apartments, great idea, mismanaged. And has caused problems for the city of Tempe, the police department, the students and everything else. So I'd rather not see something like that, but I just, I forwarded an an email to um Cory, her text about an article about um. About for developers in in downtown and urban areas be thinking about that it's, that these apartments are also families, small families. That wants to be able to live downtown and have that experience, it's not just students. So I think we need to be thinking about that, but I really think that we need to not be renting, doing work to buy the beds and just don't think that's necessary.
Force that, we certainly like to, but I think it sounds like we'd still keep with the discouragement of having uh too many four-bedroom. Units in the downtown area. We have kind of identified like east of Royal Road, sort of student housing central, or it's north of Apache, south of Bay Street area there. We see most of our student housing projects that have been in like the five to seven story.
Anything else on that item regarding student housing? Okay, and anything else on item four A, heights density used before we move on to item four B? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to. Item four B, which is industrial conversion to residential and industrial innovation hubs. And I guess, Brian, you want to kick that one off too?
Yeah, thank you. So we're gonna show you a quick slide of our two key innovations, uh industrial innovation hubs that uh City Council has adopted. Uh, we did some general plan amendments, we've done some design guidelines in this area that really talk about. Um, looking how to reinvent these locations, areas. Uh, celebrating the industrial uses that exist there today while having also the opportunity to integrate new development with. Mixed-use development, residential development on some of our key corridor areas where there really is an opportunity to connect that to that street art alignment. So, or on the left, there is the Smith Induct Innovation Hub. Uh, from the top to one-one freeway, Real Salado to University Drive. And that area primarily has seen a few projects come in along Real Salado Parkway, where there is an opportunity for a possible expansion of the street garden. Uh, so there's been money investment put into that area and an opportunity to embrace some of the um older industrial areas. In that area that are looking to kind of celebrate who they are as 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 makers of of industrial industry. But at the same time, there's opportunities to redevelop some areas where along the corridor periphery, there's opportunity to spring density. And um basically a residential population to their employment. The other side is the Maker District. Um, and oh, go back to other slide. That one is also known as Broadway Maker District, uh Broadway to the north, southern to the south, Priest, and then the railroad tracks to the east. Um, and this is a probably even older industrial area that has seen some loss of tenant space within this area. I think we've had one of our first projects when we were first introducing the design guidelines and uh Council. Member Keating brought this initiative forward that we should uh envision something here in a Maker District fashion and. And this has brought a new product on board over on Broadway and Roosevelt. Um, there hasn't been um a a lot of projects, I'd say, coming in at this time, but we do see some infilling for you that. Happens on our, along the peripheral area there on Priest Drive and and Broadway as well. In fact, um. This plan and effort kind of helped sway away a a proposed would be, I guess, car wash facility site that. You know, wasn't envisioned with the plan or direction of the site would be forward. And so I think there was some residents that felt strongly and supported this initiative. Wanting to see this effort come forward and get the right land uses in in that area. I think that's why you saw the outcome of that, that one decision of denying a car wash of that location out there. Um, next slide. So what, this shows Tempe's current general plan twenty forty designation in the area, so we're introducing some lower um. Density within the the majority of the properties, but then some higher density designations up to forty-five and up to sixty-five. On the arterial intersections of of some of this area there. And that's where we see the mostly the potential for concentrated residential or mixed-use development in that area. And then the next slide introduces this area into our general plan twenty fifty land use map. Where we've got a little bit higher density in our our mixed-use industrial low category of up to twenty-five. And then again, opportunities for higher densities along the north and corners, uh arterial intersection corners of of greater than sixty-five. This location. And so this brings into the topic of questions about conversion of some industrial properties to mixed-use or residential properties. And whether those projects are in these specified locations or maybe whether they're in industrial areas that haven't been identified for mixed-use or changes. And what's thoughts, comments about some of those types of projects we see?
Uh, I guess, Commissioner, some.
One comment, you know, when we have existing business and property. Changing some residential use, you gotta look at the economic, you take industrial out and perhaps you're taking a bigger ton of taxes out of your city. Than you're placing it there. And I think we can get too caught up in that, we have to remember that the city still has problems. The residents living here, they'll want to pay a free fees and taxes for themselves, uh unless they see a direct benefit. So I think that it's also, is I think when we do these general plan amendments, uh that's a consideration, then we spray over time. Away from that, that thing, so I'm a lot, I'm concerned about how much we might swing out of tax base for one other type of tax. So that's my concern is the economic impact that each project will have, not just for people. Some with the revenue plans. Uh, as far as trapping some industry that actually brings more tax charges.
Commissioner Spears?
Yeah, that's my concern, that we're taking uh income-producing, higher, higher property taxes and uh and actually job providers away. And just because it happens to be empty land right now, it's easy to put a permit up. I think we need to have a long-term strategic approach to um how we consider. What we want, city, we want to be a better community because that would be very easy to become at this point, or would we rather be a net of poor jobs? So I think that that's something that is uh from a vision standpoint, we were looking to you to kind of let us know, is that okay? That we just continue because it's easy to build multifamily. Is that okay, or do we want to save some of the land for mixed-use projects that are actually generators?
I I I think it's an excellent point, um, and one of the things that I've, that I know that's been discussed a little bit too is I think we do need to keep. A the right amount of industrial in the city to ensure that we still do have uh job creation and job growth in the community. We're not taking out entities that are going to produce a higher rate of property taxes than apartment complexes, Mike. I think one of the issues that's come up though is that some of the industrial we have is sort of is old at this point and it's not the, it's not right size for the kinds of industry that are taking place in the year twenty twenty-three. So how do we bring in more industrial facilities or remake some of those areas that are already zoned for industrial? To have buildings on them where people could actually produce the goods and services of today and not of, you know, kind of nineteen eighty-five. But I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Spears and Commissioner Casano, that we shouldn't just, that just because we might need to change the buildings and get more modern updated facilities. Doesn't mean that we should wipe out industrial zoning and just put multifamily housing everywhere. Yes, Bishop, which one?
I think similar to that, as we were originally introduced to the concept of that, there was a lot of talk of, you know, that for mixed use would have. Some sort of an industrial role. And so what we've seen come before us is mostly projects that are just multifamily, but maybe a small element of of retail on the pedestrian level. So can there be more purposeful uh mixed use that incorporates the makers and the actual artists and things like art space that we see in other communities? Where we're really collaborating.
Uh, you got a brush?
Um, I also just wanna put out there that if you look at the industry, a lot of like uh businesses. Been back beyond just lately today, I mean, going out of business. Um, what are we gonna do when, um, what what's gonna happen to Tempe Market? Arizona Mills, all the industries and businesses that we have there sooner or later, we'd, we're, I don't want to. Would, we're, I don't want it to just end up like how PS evolved in. So I'm just curious because even when you look at the corners, like we had our little corner, oh, they're, most of them are empty now. So that's, that's a concern to me too, because a lot of the, the businesses that used to be where we go to shop, most people do it online. So what are we gonna do? What are we gonna start to look at in our city? Because I don't want us to be in a situation that we have to follow, we have to be reactive like Mesa. We need to start being proactive, start thinking about different hubs that are going out of business as we speak. Walmart, you know, they're talking about that more Walmarts are gonna be going out of business. What happens in our Elliott Walmart or our, so I'm just thinking we need to start proactively start thinking about that too, because every day I look up, there's another big corporation that has been around for a while is now following, you know, bankruptcy. So I just want to look at that too. And what are we doing about our corner stores and our subs like we used to have out there, those little small shopping malls? Centers are just vacant. So what are we gonna do about that too? That's, those are things I'm just curious to, we should have conversations around.
One of the, one of the things that I really like about what's going on in Tempe marketplace is a lot of building that's happening now around the mall. You are getting a lot more multifamily and industrial out in that area on the north side of Rio Salado. But it is one of the things that I know a lot of members of our staff, I know Rosie, you and I have talked about this a lot. And I think Maria and I have talked about it quite a bit too, but places more like Arizona Mills. Because Councilor Paj talked about people's buying habits are changing. People are buying a lot more online and they're not going to physical stores. And while these sales may still be strong at a mall like that, we all can kind of see where the trends are going as people begin to buy more and more things online and they don't put a physical store just because they don't have the time or it's just sort of a different way of thinking about how to consume goods and services. So, um, Captain?
I want to go back to the question or the concern raised by commissioners Casano and Spears in swapping out industrial, which is brings revenue into the city, needed revenue and trading it out for something else. I think that's an important point. And then I weave into what, what the mayor said about modern manufacturing. And I'm looking at Baker specifically. I think I know more about that than the Smith Innovation and the types of buildings. And my understanding is that they are outdated. The building height, ceiling heights, the, how they are constructed does not match current needs for current levels of manufacturing. So we need to look at that. I recall. And, and this, I do read your minutes from your meetings because there was one issue. It was when you were discussing the construction that was occurring at the old Big Sur facility and there was a, and a challenge and something was outdated and it was a code. Yes, I'm looking at staff, but maybe we need to.
The building length.
Yeah, it was the building height, the ceiling height of something. And I think the response was, yeah, it's inconsistent. And we need to address it. But when weren't we addressing? And maybe that's one of the first steps that we need to address something to allow some growth and the ability to add new updated light industrial manufacturing.
And one of the other things. We do exactly that. So we are currently processing a context that will allow these industrial properties to, you know, go to a taller height, you know, to move those.
The, the challenge for great ideas, Maker and Smith districts were, were great ideas. The challenge that they're gonna have in the marketplace as it stands now is industrial and smaller flexibility to earn great demand all over town and especially within close proximity to the airport. So those things, as they sit, even though they're older, are increasing in value and are sought after. In the future, they will eventually attract developers. Now, the challenge will be especially for Smith, they're smaller parcels. You've got to assemble those things to do modern developments, just like the Big Sur site where they're putting up very large buildings on a spec basis. But it'd be interesting, you know, I don't know how long it'll take for people to, to figure out how to assemble those, those parcels. There are some large administrative districts, there are some very large parcels that can be looked at. We don't know as a commission what the, what the city's vision or plan is for Hayton Road north of the two oh two, which is, you know, all those parcels and, and also the County Island to the west of that. We've seen three projects, I think, come through us with DRC for, for the County Island. And I assume that there's a, a plan for eventually absorbing it all, but what's the vision? What's that gonna become? What should it become? Is that a place that, that maybe we'll, could see industrial development sooner? Because there's a lot of garbage over there now. You've got a lot of buildings. There's just a lot of open space.
I don't see Commissioner Lloyd and Commissioner Millen.
That's one on that area where you're talking about County Island, some of the developments that we've seen on Coria. I think that the staff did a good job, if I remember correctly, trying to create that continuity between developments by creating a placebo, so creating a pedestrian experience that may happen at some point in the future. Once more parcels get assembled. So I just wanted to bring up that point that there was some thoughtful thinking in that. And, and I like that in terms of some of the reasons we've been discussing today, but kind of having that long-term vision so that we're creating a quality of life experience and not just repeating the same thing over and over. So kudos to staff on.
Commissioner Millen?
Just a quick comment about both of these. When you're looking at the, especially the mixed use, and that's a, a term of art that some encompasses a lot of sins or can't. But I'm concerned that you've got in several of these where you're talking a dust mixed use industrial, but you're going up to forty five dwelling units per acre. That's, that seems to be counterintuitive to in mixed use industrial when you can allow all of that, all of that occupancy. Does that, I mean, maybe it makes sense, but to me, it's not necessarily, you're sending two different messages.
Anyone else?
I'd like to tag on with that.
Yeah, Bishop.
Christopher Miller says, yeah, you know, somebody in business is watching at him saying, well, you know what? I've got clients and maybe I can convince them that forty five DU per acre, they could put their apartments in here and get a better return. Because we'll turn this thing over in a couple of years, most of it will be occupied, leased, all of that. Whereas somebody wants to do industrial says, shoot, I don't want all that stuff around me because they're gonna complain about what I do. And so we're driving them out of there because we are, it's easier to get somebody to put money towards residential right now. Well, then maybe it is industrial. So I think we've got to be really careful as to what we allow in. If we look at stuff north of Longfury and those places, what's going in there right now is residential. That's what's driving that because somebody said, okay, I'm willing to go and work to assemble these parcels. Because that County Island has been a nightmare for Tempe, which I got here fifty years ago. It's not gonna change till that's done. But right now we're pushing residential. And is that the best place to hire? Because if you want to look at going to the west in that, they married. Industrial will never survive in there because those people don't want it. That's the pressure that the council's gonna get is that let's keep on pushing for more density now. And I can tell you, the zoning attorney, that's, that's where they're red booked. And that's another thing, you know, they tend to drive the issue. They, they come in with the impression that, okay, we met with the council, I had same experiences on the council and they're for this. Well, we don't know whether they're for it or not. And the staff is faced with having to meet them first and then say, well, you know, you gotta do this well, but the council, I didn't pocket up and they, they tend to like that. Well, the plan at that stage is just one, it may get, nothing more than that. So that's the concerns I think that we have at our level. What are we? What, what does the council want us to really consider when we make that? Right, you know? But I can tell you how many smoking place vape shops and other stuff, massage places have gone into these whole residential virtual areas, retailer, it's because small and so on, but is that what we really are looking? We can't seem to attract them to restaurants, as I think Mike had tested. Remember the back kind of, what are we gonna put on World and Elliot, you know, people have grand plans, these big restaurants. But the restaurant, he's got costs he's gotta give. He's gotta have customers that will come and spend the place. And just go there and do it. And that's true. The other tribe of course, well, we've got a lot of things going on, but we as a commission it's really nice that we have a little more clear idea on some of this stuff. When it is first approached, city first approaches.
When it comes to DRC, it's like it's a done deal. It costs a lot of money to get it to the point, us developer, whether it's part or whatever. By the time it gets to us, they've spent a ton of money on it. And it's one of those things like maybe we can empower staff to be a little more at their level so that it's like, okay, this doesn't make sense. And that means you guys have to know what the city wants there. But if you could say, hey, you know, don't bother spending all this money or going to council directly and circumventing the staff and DRC because it's like, oh, well, we have, we have the votes on, on council. So you, we don't really care. So if there's some way that, that maybe that would be helpful. The number of use permits we see now and that used to be handled by a hearing officer and that's no longer there. They just come directly to DRC and most of them are on consent agenda. There are a few that aren't. But it just seems like it's, it's not necessarily good use of time and effort. You know, if we tell someone, that's their job to look at use permits and understand what's really going on instead of getting seven people who have their own opinions about what it was. I mean, that really is judicial procedure. And then that adds to your burden because we don't like something, they appeal it to you. So it would seem like there's a way to empower staff. I know they're shorthanded and probably hate me for saying this, but, but if there was some way that we gave them a more leverage in terms of working with developers and saying, hey, yeah, this isn't gonna work. This material's not gonna work, you know, I already know it's, you know, something, something to that.
Captain Ross?
Well, I, I want to follow up with what you're saying. Maybe as council, we need to give them some kind of guidelines too, like a, like a kind of written manual that's saying, maybe this is what we're looking for in that area and that should be something that the seven of us come up with an idea. So they don't have to second guess or keep guessing their, you know, have their magic wand thinking what we want. Maybe they'll have a guideline to say, yeah, this kind of doesn't fit in. And if they don't have questions, then they can come back to us. But we need to, as council, come down and say, you know, give some guides on what we want in certain areas and we need to do. I think that should be something that council sits down and work on.
To Commissioner Spears, to your point, I, I kind of the use permits, I completely agree. I, I would much rather those be handled by hearing officers than have to end up in front of DRC. So I think that's a really, that's an excellent point. And the other thing I just, it's sort of just, you know, kudos to Jeff and Ryan, because I know there was a recent project, I won't name which one it is, but I think the DRC commissioners know of a, you know, large multifamily apartment complex that was going to go sort of on university. And I know one of the things that they did for P especially, they came and sat down and said, look, mayor, I understand that it was passed. This is the kind of thing that we just sort of allowed, but we are going to begin to demand higher quality building materials to Commissioner Lloyd's point. And if we have to go back and forth with the developer and the zoning attorney a few times, you know, we just, we're gonna have to do that. But the only way we can actually get people to build with higher quality materials and to build with more timeless iconic designs is if we have the authority, you know, from the council to push back a little bit more. And when they come to you and they eventually go around us, you have to be willing to stand up for us and say, nope, that's what staff wanted. And quite honestly, they're, they're more expert at this than we are. And so I'm gonna trust your judgment. And I think we got a much better project out of that because we did give staff the authority to push back and get something of much higher quality. But I appreciate the fact that, you know, they came to me before the developer got to me and told me, we just need you to stay strong when we know they're gonna come around us at some point because they're gonna get frustrated. And so to both of your points, I completely agree. Uh, yes, Commissioner Ford?
Just to add to that, that opportunity when they do come to study sessions, to be able to give that feedback ahead of the time when they need to they get DRC approval because they're on the council agenda, the next two meetings. I think having that study session opportunity really gives us that, that opportunity to that they have the time to make some tweaks before it becomes last minute.
That's what we're going.
I, I know, talking about this again, but I think, again, Councilmember Hodge talked about also is that is having that list or that idea of what the council's gonna be expecting. And I think it's something that we should look at doing every two years and get a new council. We should, we should be looking at it at a retreat every two years on, are these still the expectations and still the, the vision that we have for the city?
Anything else?
That too, we're gonna pull this as comments. You know, we're hoping that it's helpful that we've been providing some, some of our previous comments and recommendations to the, you know, to the applicants as a part of the fact that we provide you on a regular basis. You know, while we may not be recommending for a certain sign or a certain layout, they still have the ability to move forward and propose their project as they want. So we purposely have been including that information in the information that we provide you. So, you know, we're hopefully, hopefully that's helpful to you have the certain past conditions and concerns that you've had through that, a little bit of site finding process, but also conditionally.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none online. I guess I'll move forward to item number five, open discussion on current and future projects. I was actually, wanted to throw something in there, but I was making sure that my city attorney would not jump across the table at me if I tried to squeeze it in four B. One of the things I know, Rhonda, I know you and Jeff and I have had a lot of conversation about, and this is not a future project necessarily, but one of the things I would love to talk about at some point down the road is the future development of kind of that North Tempe Rural Scottsdale Road corridor. Because on that, kind of once you start getting into the Scottsdale Road area, on the east and west side, you have a lot of businesses there that are quite honestly just sort of dragging down the overall quality of those neighborhoods. And the residents over there consistently, I don't want to say complain because it makes it sound like it's not justified. I think they're completely justified in complaining about some of the businesses that are currently operating there and some of the activity that they're seeing and how it's dragging down their property values and quality of life. And what they're seeing in the downtown and the novice innovation corridor on Apache Boulevard, they're seeing those areas continuously get upgraded with better retail, better restaurants and just sort of a better quality of life. And I think they're saying, how do we get some of that to spread up here? So we can also experience some of the prosperity that's happening in other parts of the city. So I know it's, it's a complicated thing, but one of this, but just throwing out a big picture idea for a future discussion is what can we begin to do to sort of improve that Scottsdale Road corridor as we're heading north into Scottsdale? Because those are, those are communities that really are clamoring for better options and higher quality things that they can also take advantage of without having to come into the downtown. So just a thought. Anyone else? Any other, any like discussion on current future projects or is any ideas, Councilor Paj?
I have, right. But Clint Rock and Broadway, we got a lot of open area in some of those stores over there. Nothing came since smart final. It's been sitting there for years or empty. There's a lot of empty areas over there that we could be doing something with in that area. And also we need to try to set up a time, what I just said about us coming together and, and setting some guidelines as a council, maybe, I don't know how we would do that. Would it be in a, I guess that's a funny question. Is that a study session? Is that, I mean, a working, working session or is that, how will we, how will we come to that tree? What will we do?
And City Attorney?
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge, there, there's various ways that it, it could be done. And it would be, in my opinion, a combination of some of the things that you talked about. Because what, what can happen is there can be an initial presentation in a work study session that leads you into different directions and, and assignments and sometimes. That leads you into different directions and, and assignments and sometimes social legal advice. So we have to go that route too.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, there, we add that to our agenda.
Absolutely. We definitely add that. Uh, let's see, Bishop Spears.
Can I ask a question about future projects? Can you give an update on the? Southern and Hill corner and also the Apache Boulevard. Food City site.
Can we give, um, can we give updates now or, or we have to schedule that for future D R C meeting for us? Madam City Attorney?
You, Mary, you didn't pass the, um, uh, topic agendas for current projects and though those are current projects.
Perfect. Um, maybe we could start food city. I think that one's easier. I know that one still has a current R F P out. I know the southwest quarter of building southern side is a little more sensitive, but I know some of the negotiations are still ongoing. But if we can start talking about, uh, the food city R F P, I've seen a real lot. They're kind of getting prepared to come up to the front.
I can hear.
Unscheduled. Wherever you like.
Okay.
As long as, as long as they can hear you in that big tone in the middle of the thing.
They're going to hear me. That's fine. I'm sure. I'm fairly loud. Hi, everyone. Happy to see you all again. Um, for the food city lot, that's our Apache Central R F P. It actually closes next week on Tuesday. We are very excited about it. We've received numerous inquiries. Numerous. So we, we would be surprised if we didn't get, um, if we got fewer than five proposals. That's how many inquiries, inquiries there have been. So we're very excited about that. As soon as our typical process, as you may know, is as soon as the proposals come in, we put together an evaluation panel. And then we read the proposals for them, interview and so on and so forth. So you will be hearing something more about that hopefully very, very soon. Yes.
Just to refresh, what's the, the R F P ask for them?
Yes, that's a good idea. Um, the R F P is asking for mixed use development. Um, up to five stories at max, no more than 400 units. We would like up to, uh, minimum 50% affordable housing units there, uh, as well as a grocer. The grocery is very important since food city closed about 18 months ago. And that neighborhood is now a food desert. So those are the primary considerations. And there, there are other little things. We want the sustainability. There is a grant money to put. Uh, solo panels, for example, near the, the envision center. Um, we're looking for other commercial uses as well. Uh, we'd like to create space for some of the businesses that are across the street. And that Apache Central, I'm sorry, Apache Shopping Center is what it's called. We need to change the name so we can tell the difference between the two. But that's the one where Hattie Baba is. Um, we recently purchased that property. We would like to be able to move those businesses over into the Apache Central. Uh, redeveloped properties so that we can then do a redevelopment on the south side of the street. That's a long term goal. Are there any questions on it?
Uh, Bishop, a one?
The grocer, how would you be able to select someone that you know has a grocer in tow? Like, will they have a letter of intent or how can we kind of guarantee that? They need to demonstrate that they have a brochure to entail. What was done? A letter of intent would be sufficient?
We might talk seven eleven or something like that.
No, can't see a little grocery. Yes, yes.
And we were also very much pushing for an affordable grocery store kind of here in the area, not kind of in the whole foods, A J's kind of mall. But something more in a traditional pride safe way. And perhaps something that's kind of an urban grocery store model, kind of like what the whole foods looks like on university. Uh, in terms of being kind of, uh, mixed in with other things, but obviously of, of a more accessible grocery store for people of regular economics.
If I may to, to respond to Commissioner Schwartz's earlier point, that's exactly what we're trying to do is ensure that the commercial that comes in. Uh, first of all, comes in and then is useful.
I guess the second thing would be to, uh, Bishop Spears' question regarding the southwest corner of Mill and Southern, the Denell Plaza shopping center.
Denell Plaza. So we are currently waiting for, um, a, a termination plan for the condo regime there. Um, the city has been handcuffed for a while because of the condo regime that is on the property. So now that we have a majority of the property owners that are interested in being part of the development team. Uh, we need to figure out what the plan is to go forward to do that. And it's a quite a complex issue and I'm not an attorney, but I know enough to understand it's very complex. So what we have asked for them to do is, what we've asked for them to do is present a plan to us so that we can present to council. So that we know what the next steps are and that we can understand how we go about doing that.
Maria, excuse me. I, I don't want to get too far ahead. I, I know you're trying to be responsive and I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay.
But that, that's about as far as we can go.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, um.
This is my thing to comment is kind of interesting because city all used to be.
I remember, yeah.
We used to be part of that.
I, I still found it interesting when we kind of went to the initial round of, with the R F Q. Uh, and looking at the previous two proposals, one of them actually pulled the promotional material for Denell Plaza, which said Denell Plaza. The heart of Tempe's new downtown. That's interesting. Um, so, uh, let's see, Commissioner Miller?
Just a quick clarification. If you could give it with deference to our attorney, define condo regime. Can she do that?
I saw the word regime.
Yeah.
I, I can do that without, without giving legal advice. Um, it's not legal advice. It's factual. I promise you that. Um, the, uh, property is subject to a condominium regime. Like if this, if there's condo here, then it's governed by a condominium regime. And there are ways to form condominium regimes and there are ways to. Uh, dismantle them.
All right.
Uh, Councilor Garland.
This is not on either one of those two topics. Since you're up there, I just have a question. I don't know if it's you that would answer this, Maria. Um, are there any plans or anything going on on the north? Northwest corner of Elliott and Merle. It used to be a CBS pharmacy or something, and then it was a grocery store. And it's been empty for a really long time.
The one that was the old Walmart market.
Yes.
There, we have met with a couple of groups, but it definitely has, has gone further than that. We're still working. Have a look there.
Yes, Councilor Hodge.
The one on, let's go back a little bit. So on, but one on Guadalupe and the, the wherever that.
Yeah, Albertson's.
The Albertson used to be. Is there anything more there? Cause that's been.
That one, uh, we haven't had any takers on yet. But we're, no, that's, that's exactly what we're working.
Well, and to that point, I think that that's one of the, that's a very interesting conversation going forward as well. Because we've already outlined a couple of places that the Albertsons at the northwest corner of rural Guadalupe. There's the old Walmart market side, which was their kind of small, fresh and easy style concept that failed over 10 years ago. And the building's been sitting vacant ever since. There's the, uh, rural and Broadway, of course, the old Whole Foods, which was by my old townhouse. That's been vacant now for at least a couple of years. So at the smart final, I have the Clintock and Broadway. So, yeah, there are a number of these sort of big box grocers that have gone out of business and it's sort of left big gaping holes in the shopping centers. So I think whatever we can do to begin to focus on those from an economic development perspective, I think that would be great.
One of the issues that we have is, for example, the Whole Foods is that they're still paying their lease. They have a long term lease and they're still paying on it. So there's no incentive to find anybody new.
Right.
Um, now we, we are working, we have an idea about trying to do something with that space. Um, considering that we have all of our BIPOC businesses that we, we just, we have this great program for, and they're doing very well. But they have nowhere to move into where there is, um, lower rent. So we're thinking maybe there's a way to do something there. Uh, we just reached out this week without any, uh, results yet, but we're hoping to bring something forward soon. If we can get a partnership with Whole Foods.
Thank you. One other off development question. You know, we, we've got, we've received a report that tells us, um, how many, um, businesses that are coming in? And how many jobs that's going to be in the average for those? Is it possible to get something like that given to us also that's how many apartment complexes that we have approved and how many units are coming in? And because it's, it's interesting to me. It feels like, you know, every, every month we're approving or looking at something else. But I'm just curious to what's the total that we're coming in because I'm on a mag board. And one of the things we talked about is housing and, and units and how many are available. And I just, I don't know what we've got coming in because I don't keep a tally. I'm just wondering if you guys do.
That's it.
Yes. That'd be good.
Basically give our, all of our mesh data to mag and provide that update. So they have the most, uh, up to date projections.
Can I piggyback off that a little bit too? One of the, going back to one of the earlier conversations about maintaining the right balance between residential and industrial. Is there a way of actually knowing from a percentage standpoint, if we are maintaining that balance? Cause then obviously we're getting projects in kind of a one off kind of way. You know, developers come in, they propose a lot of multifamily and we're looking at it as just sort of a single project. But is there a way to know from a report or some kind of an update, you know, council, we're getting to a point where we are beginning to tip. Too far in the wrong direction and we need to consider that before you start rezoning to future land.
Mayor, we could absolutely do that. Like we, we did, I think you may have seen, we did a confidential memo on a vacancy report for the Maker District. Eighty-three weeks ago, we could do an overall, uh, industry report, uh, as part of our annual report for you and work with community development to look at. Look at those numbers. So you can see them on a moving time base that we can go back in time as well. So you can get a better view.
Rosa, then you'll go, Hodge.
Thank you, mayor. I think following up on some of the items, I think you may want further feedback. Brian, I'm Brian out of ink over there. I'm trying to keep up with what's been suggested. So productive though. And I keep thinking, what are the next steps? And as we've talked about, even with affordable housing, kind of doing an asset map, that would help everyone at this table understand where are we in Tempe. And more importantly, for us to work with economic development and our staff to look at. Where do we want to be in Tempe? We're at the tipping point of transformation in our city. We have great problems in Tempe. Everyone wants to be here, whether it's a business or residential. So I, it's this timing of this conversation, and I thank Jeff and his team for, for scheduling that along with the mayor and council. And initiating that conversation. I think we would like to come back together, uh, as a staff now that they're almost done with the general plan. Why would we want them to sit around and do nothing planning, um, to sit around and perhaps, because that's what you have to do. So perhaps take this, especially the conversion rates of industrial to residential. One of the things we always talk about, what is the economic impact of that? Looking at the study, what is our asset? What do we have? And then if there was a certain percentage to what we're saying, if we converted that to residential, what would that look like? And I know Tom Dunsting, our CFO would be very much would like to be involved in that conversation with our tax license. So all those are intentional conversations, but more importantly, as I always say, who do we want to be in the next few years? Not just the general plan, but really right now, looking at our urban core and our innovation hubs. And then coming back in a work study or possible retreat. Um, and speaking with the mayor and council staff, we'll have some recommendations. I know that Jeff has been whispering a few things and then obviously with our partners, the D R C. Uh, and then moving forward, I say, when you identify where you want in Tempe, people will come. Forward and can give you exactly that will make it much easier for everyone. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Hodge, there you go.
Okay, my, my last thing is also can we have a, a readout or printout of how many buildings are abandoned? Like shopping mall centers, all the different places that are just open that we can, you know.
Retail vacancies.
Retail vacancies and where they're located.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Point I think was made by Councilmember Keating earlier. I think, I thought it was a good one in terms of the significant staff time that was devoted to the urban core master plan. We have all those materials. It's a good launching off point. If there's a consensus from council today that we should go back and revisit that, because a lot of the things that came up today. Were squarely addressed in that. And the decision was made several years ago to, to pause it. So definitely. But maybe based on what we're hearing here today, it might be a good opportunity to use it as a launching off point. To the point that was made earlier about what do we want to be? What does Tempe want to be in three or four years or in the future? That document was intended to have that kind of purpose. And so there's a lot of information that was gathered, a lot of work that was done with the development community. And with the D R C and a lot of, you know, you remember participating, I'm sure significantly in that process. That could be a good place to, to move from. Councilperson?
But I think.
Oh, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Schwartz, okay, great. Thank you.
One, one question, um, that we saw two projects this past year where we were changing the zoning. I think the food city site was one and the other was on, um, North Borough Road. That's kind of changing the zoning it preemptively. And, and so if there was just an update on this. We think that's a successful, um, venture or opportunity. We're going to continue to see more on. I know it was challenging for us on the commission not to have a project specifically that we were voting on. And so any updates on those two projects and plans moving forward?
Um, to echo at that, uh, if a developer came with, uh, to us with that, we would never approve it. But the city came to us and expected us to just on space, say, oh yeah, this is a good deal. This is what we want to do. And, um, I have to relationship with it, express it at that time. But I think that there. If we're going to make that available, it should be available to everyone who's available to know what I mean.
Are you planning a update to council on the, on service process? This is a work study.
And, and just before I go to Councilperson Shin too, that was only in place, I believe for a year, right? That provision, we did then go back and revisit that. That's a bit odd, I said a little delay for a few months. Okay, we're supposed to come back in January. Sounds good. Councilor Keating?
Well, I wanted to comment on what city manager King said. I, I recall the urban core master plan and, and the multiple readings that we went through. Before we, um, ask for consensus to use that as a launching point, I think we need to revisit. And I would like to have staff look at. I'd like to hear what they would want to do and what they recommend because there were, there were a lot of issues with what was created. And I think we've learned a lot since then. And rather than have us decide, yes, let's launch from there. I want to hear from staff and better understand. What do we need to create? Let's take, we can Frankenstein some of the items from it that were great, but a lot has changed since that was created.
Absolutely. That's what I intended by launching off point. It's to have a reassessment of what, what appears to be still viable and what may not be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I love the Frankensteining concept because I, I, I mean. Basically, I would think, you know, myself and Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Hodge are the three council members who basically were not here when that was being discussed. And then it seemed like one of the challenges, and I could be completely misinterpreting this, is that there was so much stuff in it because it was so comprehensive. It kind of began to collapse a little bit under its own weight because there were some things that some people liked and other things that people would be opposing. So there are items though to Council of the key to explain this to city manager, your point, that are sort of consensus items that both the D R C and the council think we could probably yank out of there. And begin to move forward. I think that would be a great jumping off point. But I mean, and all right, I agree, we need to, you know, what we, we, I want to make sure that we're not, that it can be something where we can get some short term wins and not have to wait too long for the long term.
Stair stepping first, is how you can gradually move back in height from the street backwards. But things like that were included in that, they were included in the original two thousand and six document. That was the basis of updating their record master plan in the first place.
Right on.
Correct. I mean, that's where a lot of these concepts come.
All right. One of the things happened since then, back then, there was no development on Ash, no development. Um, we didn't have streetcar there. Uh, we didn't have farmer development. So a lot of the streetscape has changed and we need to kind of take a fresh look at it based on what's, what's here now and that one was there in two thousand and six. You know, two thousand and eight, it's just, yeah.
Councilor Garland?
I just want to say, I, I agree. I think I appreciate Councilmember Keating bringing that up. He's mentioned that before, I think. And I think it's a good idea for us to do. And I do like the, the Frankensteiner.
That's what Councilperson Shin said. I, I go with her.
We will Frankensteine it. I think that works out great. But I agree. I think, I, I think that that is something that maybe we can revisit. I appreciate that.
That's a call of all a card too. Commissioner Lloyd?
And I don't remember all the details, but I do remember, and maybe it was a bad idea, would not make the next cut. But there was something in the, sort of core master plan about, you know, basically borrowing from somebody else's density. So I like that in the sense that we should keep some character around here because just because we can go down some names should. And then how do certainly property owners get short change because they're not going tall? And I really liked that concept. There was a way to.
Credit destiny credits.
Yeah.
The destiny on this credits. Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Should that historic preservation of what? I would also say too, I don't know how frequently we will have these joint meetings, but I love the notion of, I mean, I think this has been very informative. I hope everyone's gotten a lot of enjoyment, a lot of interesting ideas and sort of got the creative juices flowing from this. So I would love to try to find a way to do this on a more regular basis. So we're just sort of staying in tune with one another because I find this to be tremendously valuable, so.
I would like, maybe after we do our retreat, we can have another meeting to come back and present what we brought to you guys. Once we get it all written out and taken into that.
And I think our retreat, I believe, is scheduled for August, I believe, is that right? That's, that's not too far away, so. October?
It's October.
Okay, well, let's take a look then. Okay.
So see you next year.
Well, no, because we could figure it out. I mean, I do think that, would anyone, well, before I close, does anyone have any recommendations on the potential frequency of these meetings? How, I mean, we can do a couple of times a year, we can do quarterly, we can do whatever people want to do.
What about quarterly?
Yeah, I think it depends on what kind of activity we're seeing. I mean, we're seeing a lot of stuff now and if that drops off, it's going to be, that's regardless. But I think you're going to see some really controversial projects continue to come up. It's kind of nice if you know what you want, so we don't have to, yeah.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Yes, Eddy?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Spears on that. You know, I think maybe we set a bi-annual meeting with the option of having additional meetings, you know, to however many we need, based on essentially the workload of not only the DRC, but the city council. But I do think at least at two times a year, check-in is certainly appropriate.
Sounds good, thanks. Chair, do the medical.
I would say twice a year at most, if necessary. Things don't, goals and perceptions don't change quarterly on these bigger picture issues. Also, the most important time to do it would probably be right after your retreat. So council sets the retreat, they kind of get their heads together and decide, you know, what they want to accomplish in the next year and then they pass it on, not just to our working group, but there's probably other groups that could benefit from that too.
The only reason I'm saying quarterly, not, we can just say attentive, because if we need it. I, I fill up, I have two, I have two elected offices. And if we needed it, I can have it as an attentive meeting and I can hold it. But when you just say two times and what if we need to meet between that two times? My calendar, my calendar fills within six, within six months of that. So I'm already six months out. So I'm just saying, if we put it out, if it's just quarterly, if we don't need it, we can always cancel it. But it's there if we have it and people have it in their, their calendar. You can always just say, we don't need it at this time. But if you say quarter, six months and I'm six months out, it's going to be hard for me to go backwards and try to put that, fill it in. That's all I was asking, to put it in, not even quarterly, it could be semi-quarterly. But if you do it two times a year and we do get filled up and we need that extra time, it's going to be hard for us, all seven of us, to fill it in our calendars at that time. So I was just saying, it could be attentive and then we could take it off if we don't need it. But that's why I was saying, just a little bit more than just the two times a year.
One quick thing too, thank you, Councilor Hodge. So Todd, you just got ahold of me, September 8th is actually when our retreat's scheduled for, so it's a little bit soon. So I mean, we want to come back together potentially end of September, beginning of October, while everything is still sort of fresh from the retreat, that might be beneficial. And also because I typically see there's a flurry of development projects that happen before the end of the calendar year. So it might be good to have that check-in as those things begin to rush in for the holidays, so.
That's what I was thinking too.
So we can, we can work with everyone's schedules and see if we can find a time that works for a majority of people.
As well as the other resources that manage topics come up. Definitely let staff know what those topics are so you can start looking at.
I agree that maybe try and the quarterly placeholders and delete if we need to, I think that's probably going to do it, yeah.
Are there any other topics under item number five? I mean, is this a section broken discussion, anything else you want to throw out?
Well, I guess. Want to comment on affordable housing. I'm really proud of what Tempe's been doing toward that end. But I think what I'm hearing from people that don't understand what affordable housing is, they think it's section housing, I think it's rehousing. Then they don't understand the economic element. That's, and so it's really more the terminology that's been developed over the, you know, affordable housing, it brings a lot of other things to it, I think, because we can somehow, at the time we start talking about that, especially considering that kind of thing, that there's new projects. It's talking about housing that is affordable for people that are teachers fired by a repleasment. People that are working, husband and wife are working, that kind of thing. It takes some of that stigma away because everybody says, well, put it down there, put it down there. Well, that's where the city has property, they can use their property. But I think that just clarification a little bit when we talk about what happened.
To Commissioner Cassano's point, you know, one of the, I'm chairing a national housing examiner for the National League of Cities and one of the first meetings we had, there was a discussion among, amongst the group about, should we continue to talk about affordable housing or should we shift to talking about attainable housing? Because it sort of takes the stigma away and it obviously encompasses, from people's perspectives, a broader range of people and folks who are working. So I think that it's probably part education, but it is also the terminology that we use to bring more people in and to get rid of the stigma that many times surrounds the word affordable, so. Yeah. Councilor Garland, Chair, Dominican?
I think, I think that the same lines as when we, we would say unsheltered or homeless. You just, it's like, what, how do you, how do you look at that? But I, I went to Affordable Housing Symposium business in downtown Phoenix and that's one of the things they talked about is the nimbyism that happens when people think that they're going to put affordable housing. And what you said about section eight is their identity to affordable housing is something like that. My son graduated from ASU, got his masters, worked for ASU and he would qualify for affordable housing and what he was working, paying, getting paid here. So I think you need to be thinking about exactly what you said, is it's not what everybody thinks it is. And I think the nimbyism is what causes the problem when we start to look at these. And I think the other part of it is, it's really important is that, I think, changing the perception. So I think that's one. And I think the other one is, is in making sure when we're talking about affordable housing or units, that we're looking at that units equal people, when they're just people. I think we need to be thinking more about the people that are going to go in there and that it is not all section eight, it could be, but it's not all, that's not what it is. So I just think we need to change that, I think you're absolutely right.
Chair, Dominican?
We've come a long way, I mean, there, you know, 15 or more years ago, anytime there was any apartment complex of any size brought forward to the city, you could guarantee in our hearings that we were going to have a lot of members of the public who just, they didn't, they heard apartment and they thought, or they thought that, you know, not what we want, we're a single family kind of a community and they were opposed and they wanted to let you know about it. I remember, you know, that was frustrating. They didn't care what it looked like or what the price points were. And I think one time I asked everyone in the audience, raise your hand if you've ever lived in an apartment. You know, pretty much everybody at any meeting, everyone here, we all raise our hand. Everybody here's lived in apartments at some point in their life, but like, are you a good person? Okay then, you know, it's hard to see on a purpose. Just one idea for staff to throw out, one of the things we've seen post-COVID in the last year or so is, you know, we require public neighborhood meetings for a lot of development projects that they go through. And, and I think that the developers or their legal counsel learn to kind of game the system a little bit these days. Now, instead of having real public meetings where they bring out, you know, visual aids and they walk people through it, spend time with the neighbors, listen to their concerns. Now we have a lot of Zoom meetings and that serves as a, as the neighborhood meeting. And we've seen a lot of cases lately where they have that meeting and the attendance is zero. You know, a couple of, you know, you know, more than than a handful of times in the last few months, these projects have public meetings that no one attends. And I think that they're not trying to really bring the people out and answer their questions. I'd like to see us require face-to-face meeting, we can do a secondary Zoom meeting too. But I think the neighborhood meetings are really to happen in the neighborhoods. So I don't know if you can do that, if you require that, but that's how they used to have it, hybrid.
And I, to your, I would, I would second that. I mean, because I think we're allowed to do it because the reality is, it was one thing when the council meetings, even because COVID, were being held virtually and pretty much our entire first year was behind a computer screen. But now at this point, we're back having meetings in council chambers and we're going to neighborhood meetings, arts park, everything else. So it makes sense that zoning attorneys and developers should have to go actually in a community center or wherever it is and give a presentation in person because it's just, as we all know, it's just not the same doing it over a computer screen than it is actually in public, where you can talk to someone, read their body language and everything else. So I, I second that.
Yeah, our role is to get the public comments out so that when they get to your meeting, it's not a surprise. And I think that's what the purpose of the neighborhood meetings are, is so that people don't feel that they have to show up at a DRC hearing, take time out of their evenings or wait for kids or whatever. And they're angry at that point because they feel like something's about to get railroaded in and they didn't get a chance to let people know what the problems or their issues are. So that's part of our process of what we're here for, so.
And to that point, I know that Commissioner Spears too, and obviously too, there are some people who are still not very comfortable with the use of technology. I mean, I, I'm very comfortable with it, obviously, but I still have to, when my dad has a Zoom call go to his house instead of the phone and watch him while he does it because I'm like, you can't figure this out, but you can. He doesn't use it enough to get good at using it. So, so I think there are going to be a lot of people in our community who are not used to using these kinds of things who may feel, even though it is technically more accessible, they're going to say, I would much rather show up to a meeting in person than I would try to fiddle with my laptop or my iPad, so.
To the, that point, our last two meetings, I think Webex has not been working. So we haven't had any, people have been doing that, it's not president in chambers, so.
Anyone else? Any other topics anyone wants to discuss?
In the future?
In the future?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, not hearing any, just once again, just want to say thank you to everyone for being here, commissioners, council, staff. Excellent, excellent meeting. We will go ahead and adjourn, but we will make sure to check with you once the next council retreat is for September 8th. So we'll try to find a time for us to come back together, kind of shortly thereafter, to kind of get back together while everything's still fresh, as the council member says, and continue visiting on behalf of it together. So thank you very much, because we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilman Keating. Thanks for that.